False alarm.
Good evening and welcome to the special called City of Roswell Mayor and City Council Meeting of Monday, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. I am Mayor Kurt Wilson. I'd like to introduce my colleagues and council members present. Council Member Sarah Beeson, Council Member Christine Hall, Mayor Pro Tem and Council Member Lee Hills, Council Member David Johnson, Council Member William Mortland, and Council Member Allen Sells. I'll now turn the meeting over to our Chief Administrative Officer and City Administrator, Mr. Randy Knighton, to explain how the meeting is run. Mr. Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson, and good evening to everyone. In accordance with Section Chapter three point seven zero of the city code, the city council shall hold regular meetings, and the mayor can call it a special called meeting, which is the meeting we have this evening. The purpose of these meetings are for the public to participate and speak on agenda items which constitute formal decisions by the elected body. And these items can be accessed via the city website prior to the meeting. This is a public meeting. Some items do require a formal public hearing. This is the first reading of the two thousand and twenty six proposed budget. And an important component of city council meetings is to hear directly from residents on these items. Residents are at the top of the organizational chart for the city, and therefore, public comments and questions are essential for mayor and council to consider as they contemplate each decision. If you would like to speak on an agenda item, in this case, the first reading of the proposed two thousand and twenty six budget this evening, we ask that you do fill out a comment card and hand it to our communications staff person, Julie Breckel, who is at the back of the room, if you would like to speak on the first hearing of the budget. We ask that you provide a comment card to Julie. She will make sure the city clerk receives it. And speakers will be called by the city clerk in the order in which cards are received. We ask that everyone do adhere to the principles of mutual respect and display the appropriate demeanor during the course of the meeting this evening, which is reflective of this great community. We ask that attention is given to the person speaking, and if it is necessary, to have an independent conversation. We ask that you exit the rear doors to the vestibule area. We also ask that you silence any electronic devices at this time. The mayor is the presiding officer of the meeting and will ensure the orderly exchange of comments, questions, and discussion with the members of the public and the elected body. And we encourage everyone, as always, to visit Roswell three sixty five dot com for a calendar of events. There are a number of events upcoming in the city of Roswell which promote community, physical activity, and leisure, as we all make Roswell the number one family community in America. Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Knighton. As always, I'm extremely privileged tonight to introduce our next guest. We're very honored to have Dr. Saban Strickland, Senior Pastor of Pleasant Hill Church tonight, to lead us in the invocation of膜拜science. Dr. Strickland.
Thank you so much, Mayor Wilson, and of course, to our entire city council and to the citizens of the city here of Roswell, Georgia. We're going to have our moment of silence, and then I will end it with prayer. Heavenly Father, we gather this evening in the spirit of service in this place and of purpose. We thank you for the trust placed in the mayor and city council for the citizens of Roswell, Georgia, as they work through this process of budget approval for two thousand and twenty six. Grant them clarity of mind and integrity of heart and unity of spirit as they deliberate any matters before them. May their decisions reflect the common good, the welfare of our neighbors, our neighborhoods, and our long-term health of our community. Give them wisdom, dear Lord, to listen attentively. Give them courage, God, to speak truthfully, and compassion to act justly. May every voice be heard, every viewpoint respected, and every decision made with respect for the dignity of all. Bless our city, its neighborhoods, its businesses, its schools, and its churches, its volunteers and first responders. May Roswell continue to thrive as a place of welcome, safety, and opportunity. And as this meeting proceeds, may all who serve here do so with humility and gratitude for the privilege to lead. May peace guide their deliberations, and may goodwill mark the outcomes. We pray these prayers in the name of your son, our Savior. Christ's name we pray. Say amen.
Amen. Would y'all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Strickland. As always, a wonderful word of prayer. Well, there is only one item on the agenda tonight. City Clerk Nancy Long, would you please read that one item?
Yes, this is the first reading of the FY two thousand and twenty six budget for the city of Roswell in the amount of two hundred and twenty nine million, nine hundred and eighty seven thousand, two hundred and seventy one dollars. This will be presented by Director of Finance, Adam Novotny.
Thank you so much, Nancy. Chief Legal Officer David Davidson, would you please read the ordinance, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance adopting a budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty six for each fund of the city of Roswell, Georgia pursuant to Article six, Chapter six of the Charter of the city, beginning January first, two thousand and twenty six, and ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty six, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations for each fund, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available for each fund, and amending the code of ordinances to effectuate such adoption. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell pursuant to their authority do hereby adopt the filing ordinance. The city of Roswell, Georgia hereby adopts an expenditure budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty six, said budget being described and shown in Attachment A for each fund of the city of Roswell, Georgia. A millage rate of four point nine four nine mils is estimated as a part of the proposed budget. The budget rate has a component of four point zero four nine mils for the general fund budget and a component of point nine zero zero mils for servicing bonded indebtedness. The millage rate shall be adopted by mayor and council at a later date, but prior to issuance of tax bills for the tax year two thousand and twenty six. The mayor and council adopt a capital improvement programming for fiscal year two thousand and twenty six as attached here two and incorporated here as Attachment B. This programming does not indicate any promise of appropriations for future years or unfunded projects. The rest of the tax is incorporated here in my reference, and if approved, this is the first reading.
Thank you, David Davidson, so much. At this time, Adam Novotny, Director of Finance, would you please come forward to present the first reading? Welcome, Adam. Good sharp tonight. Good sharp tonight. Hi, Lynn.
Never leave me in charge of technology, I'll tell you that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers back. So this is the first reading of the two thousand and twenty-six proposed budget. Some highlights of how we've arrived here. We had the All-Day Budget Workshop on October first. We had the budget presentation last Tuesday on the fourteenth, first reading tonight, and second reading and adoption next Monday, the twenty-seventh. So in the two thousand and twenty-six budget, several things to note on here. We've successfully transitioned to a calendar-aligned fiscal year. Our proposed budget is in balance with revenues meeting expenses, and there is no reduction in headcount for staff. The budget for two thousand and twenty-six is aligned with city goals. Some budget processes that I highlighted last week that I feel would be prudent to outline again. Our process has been data-driven, collaborative, with clearly outlined goals and completed along a deliberate timeline. The city of Roswell has our six pillars here: best-in-class safety, service excellence, economic development, infrastructure investment, stewarding with integrity, and top place to work. Some budget highlights that we covered last week. So streamline our planning process, improve project management discipline, enhance service delivery, and strengthen and align internal support services that are all noted on here. The two thousand and twenty-six highlights are for public safety, again, making investments in our public safety with police becoming the highest starting pay, being fully staffed, well-funded, well-trained, well-equipped, and well-led, and the strategic addition of year four of transitioning our fire department into full-time with a thirty additional firefighters planned in two thousand and twenty-six. Some statistics that I highlighted last week as well, with our Part One crime rate being the lowest in twenty years on the police end of the spectrum, and then lower response time by thirty-nine seconds in the fire department realm. Both important metrics to note as we're making continued investments in public safety. I also do want to highlight the millage rate that we talked about at the millage rate presentation when we set, when mayor and council set the millage rate for the two thousand and twenty-five this year, budget year, and has the lowest MNO in the last eighteen years in those tax years that are outlined in there. As Mr. Davidson said in his reading, the estimation is to maintain that into two thousand and twenty-six, to be set later in two thousand and twenty-six for the budget year two thousand and twenty-six. In twenty-two, under this mayor and council total was lowest since tax year eighty-seven, and twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five have the lowest MNO since two thousand and Additional highlights as well maintains the mayor and council's economic development strategy overall, streamline services for Roswell residents and businesses, and our department finances engaging in some transformative initiatives with some of our business and performance analysis, that we have a new team that's going to do that, and then some of our internal budget and fiscal reporting, along with some comprehensive projections and forecasting, really exciting things for us to be able to do on behalf of the city. And then greater reliance upon KPIs to inform decisions and to give mayor and council data to make decisions overall on behalf of the city. The two thousand and twenty-six budget also has a bold agenda to make capital investments as well, with four million dollars going towards citywide resurfacing, with the city share of that being just over three point one million dollars, four hundred thousand dollars for traffic calming, seven million dollars for the city hall roof replacement, three million dollars for the Green Street Mobility Project, another one point five million for Sharpshooter's range revitalization and construction, the deck construction administration services and contingency of one point two, tourism development historic activation, just under a million, and other capital improvements of four point two. On here, this is a combination, again, of all the source of funds across the whole city enterprise, with the two thousand and twenty-five approved being on the right, the projected for twenty-five being in the middle, and the two thousand and twenty-six proposed being on the left, with charges for services being in the highest on each of those particular columns. Again, this is a combination of all the city funds across the enterprise, and we'll get to the general fund here in just a moment. And again, on all sorts of uses of funds for across the city enterprise, with of course, salaries and benefits being the lion's share of those proportions for each of those particular columns as well, with operating and transferring capital and other comprising the of that. Some other budget highlights on here, proposed expense budget, again, across all funds, just over two hundred and twenty-nine million dollars, with the general fund, T-SPOS projects, solid waste fund, our group health insurance, the PFA, participant recreation fund, capital projects, our IT fund, which is internal, and fifteen other funds comprising that total. This slide represents our proposed capital expense in two thousand and twenty-six with a grand total of about twenty-one and a half million dollars, spread across multiple different funding streams notated at the top, with the general fund expenses, which I discussed previously, being a little over four million dollars of that grand total. Some arithmetic on how we've arrived at some of that, with the general fund fund balance being over, a little over twenty-eight million dollars, with a twenty-five million dollar required reserve, leaves us with a net balance of just over two point seven million. General fund revenue in two thousand and twenty-six projected to be just over a hundred and five million, with our operating expense coming up to that at a one oh three, leaves us with a capital available of four point three million dollars, which is notated on the previous slide. Our general fund revenue, again, with the two thousand and twenty-five approved budget on the right, the year-end forecast in the middle, and the two thousand and twenty-six proposed or recommended on the left, having a variety of different sources of revenue for those, with property tax, sales tax, and business taxes comprising the largest three out of that overall, and the two thousand and twenty-six recommended, again, arriving at that one oh five point one million. And then the general fund-specific operating expenses teased out from kind of that comprehensive list of all of our funding sources, again, with twenty-five approved on the right, forecasted year-end in the middle, and twenty-six recommended slash proposed on the left, arriving at just slightly over in twenty-six what we projected in twenty-five at. The increase in salaries and benefits, of course, with the addition of additional firefighters and adjusting the police pay upward, that comprises the lion's share of what that increase has. And then on the operating end of things, you know, that's, that also for each of those particular, either it's recommended or the forecast or what they approved in, was in twenty-five. Again, the general fund capital, this number appears a number of times through here, with city ride resurfacing, the general fund portion of that, traffic calming, update to the UDC, and then the PPE equipment for the full-time firefighter transition and the dredging assistance So the general fund total by service, with public safety comprising roughly forty-seven percent of that of our total budget on this. Community services, which includes recreation, infrastructure, which includes transportation, and the other category includes PPI, finance, legal administration, and this chart does include operating capital. Important to note. Other fund highlights, so on our water and sewer fund, this is going to be kind of the similar format for the rest of them, with source of funds and use of funds. I won't belabor much of the points that we covered last week, except to say that I highlight the source of funds, water charges, so charges for service are going to be comprised, the source of funds on many of these. Same thing with stormwater fund, with charges being the lion's share of that, four point eight million dollars, or roughly ninety-eight percent, and then the use of funds between salaries, operating, transfers, and capital. Again, with the solid waste fund, sanitation collection services being a little over fifteen million, and then the use of funds between thirty percent with salary and benefits, transfers and other capital and operating. And the recreation participation fund, charges for services of nine point two million, with miscellaneous revenues, including a subsidy from the general fund, being the other seven percent of that, and then salaries and benefits, transfers, and operating on the use of funds. We talked about the general fund highlighted portion of capital. This is from the other funds. So free trucks, a front loader, side loader, and dumpster delivery, transfer station paving. Technical difficulty. We could use the overhead projector. Do you have a hard copy? There we go. This is why we're prepared. There we go. I don't know where I left off, so stormwater fund with the stormwater master project list, the large equipment replacement, and then into the water fund, water line replacement, new water tank in the concept bays, velvet wood stock water tank, and the leak event detection system, which sounds really nifty. And then our hotel motel fund, on the unrestricted end of things, being six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and then the interest in revenues, and then the use of funds that we anticipate in two thousand and twenty-six on that. I won't belabor the points we covered last week. And our budget ordinance sets the fiscal year, sets our allocation by fund and department, and establishes contingencies overall, and authorizes reappropriation into the next fiscal year for capital projects, grant projects, contingency funding, confiscated assets, opioid mitigation funding, city administrative professional services, employee wellness program, Roswell University program, police school zone safety program, external legal services, police detention up to two hundred thousand dollars, and municipal elections. Our next steps, which we've talked about, so there's a PDF copy available on the website of both the budget book and the presentation. There are hard copies available in finance during regular business hours. Tonight is the first reading, and next Monday will be the second reading and, God willing, adoption of the budget. And even though our presentation is haunted, we've made do.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Lynn. City Clerk Nancy Long, do we have any Roswell residents who would like to speak on this item?
Yes, Mayor, there are two speakers. The first is Roman Perzak.
Welcome, Roman.
I'm pretty surprised, and I don't know what's the reason. This is one of the biggest bend in the city to put the budget. Takes a year, but nobody is here. I don't know why. Shame, in my opinion. Try to involve, you try to encourage to people to involve, nobody show up here. What going on? I didn't have too much time to go through the budget, just at a time today, and I have several questions. One is, approved budget for two thousand and five, that was last year, was two oh seven million dollars. Whatever reason it is, the estimate budget for this year, for twenty-five, according to the data, like two hundred and thirty or two hundred and twenty-nine million, if I remember. What is the reason for the change? It was predicted, two oh seven, and suddenly the income going unpredictable by nine point two percent. Something doesn't fit. Now I look and tried to figure out on the computer, I found out that there are plenty of funds that you receive from the government, all the place, that it will be only twenty-five. I tried to figure out if this is the number that was increased. I never got to the difference. No one can explain it, I appreciate it. Increase budget for two thousand and five, the approved budget, this budget, about twenty-eight million dollars, freeze of eleven point two percent. Can you explain to me why it's eleven point two percent, which in my opinion is high? When I look last four years, there was increase, but not so high as this time. This is my main thing. I went through this numbers, made a bit of this number for last four years. I would like to have explanation why the budget is increasing from twenty-five. And just anecdote, when I was reading the budget, put that two thousand and twenty-five accomplishment, very nice part. I look previous year, that just thing doesn't exist. So just for the quote, accomplish this only by two thousand and twenty-five, where it was twenty-two, when it was twenty-three, when it was twenty-four. This is just anecdote. I don't complain about it, but I said, how? Action year. Thank you.
Thank you, Roman, very much. Adam, would you care to address Mr. Roman's questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to address that. In page four of the budget book, you'll note that there's twelve, a little over twelve million dollars in expenditure for the PFA. That would be a driver of the proposed increase, along with any unfinished capital projects are carried forward into the next year. Some of those take a number of years to be completed, and so when those expenses are actually incurred would be whenever they're actually incurred. So that money was sitting in a capital fund and then expended, we propose, in two thousand and twenty-six. That's pretty typical for any budgetary, and I believe that answers the question.
Yeah, the question, it was a twenty, there was two two thousand and twenty-five questions, one of difference between two oh seven and two twenty-nine and a percentage, and then there was kind of this, kind of this question additionally to that, same thing, the percentage changed. So can we outline, just for clarity, with specificity, all the differences between two thousand and twenty-five current budget, approved budget, and the twenty-six, and just make sure we kind of put that out there, buddy, and say, here's the differences. Like you said, twelve million dollars in the PFA. Just make sure we just outline, so everybody has clarity what those items are. Then you probably, you know what they are off the top of your head?
I'm going to tag Lynn in.
A lot of it is capital, and plus, and this is all funds on page four, and when you're looking at the all funds. So that twenty million gap would include bond funds, capital projects, impact fees, all of those type of capital projects that do have longstanding amounts.
That includes your spending of your bond projects as well, is that in there as well?
In the proposed, any, any amount that we would have projected to spend by the end of December, yes.
You might be spending more money of your bond money in the fiscal year twenty-six versus fiscal year twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. It's very helpful. If we can just give, yes, or Councilmember Sells?
Yeah, there's one thing on, in the budget book on page three, I think it's page three, one eighteen, right? The, looking at the sources of funds, you can see that the other revenues, budgeted appropriations, the bar, the block at the top, isn't that, so it's a source and a use when we use the capital for capital projects, right? So there's a source as well as a use. So the operations, Roman, is the same. It's that some of these capital projects are in this year, the revenue and the use. The revenue and the use is reflected in the year that it's spent, like, it's a cash, it's a cash basis as opposed to accrual basis. And so that's, that's the difference. Does that make sense? Well, so that we had already done, for instance, some of these bond offerings, but we're bringing, it's moving from one fund and going to work. So you've got, you've got the revenue coming in and the expenditures in the same year, in the current year. But the operations of the entity of the city are virtually flat year over year. Operating salaries and benefits, the gold and the blue bar on page three, I don't know if you can show him that or not on the screen. That's, but, but a capital project is an outlier in such an argument, right? So when we start building a parking deck, that's not the operations, that's an expenditure of capital that we raise the funds for. And so you have the funds as a revenue and the expense of building it as a cost. And that's not a change in the operating cost of the entity at all. It's, it's simply that we are now investing in that because we're a cash basis entity, that's what's going on here. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Roman. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Alan. All right, so there was another question, and since this is, you've been with us, how many months, Adam?
I started the day after Memorial Day.
The day after Memorial, so May of 2025. I think there was a question about why are there accomplishments in this budget presentation in 2025, but perhaps not in previous years?
Yeah, I can't speak to previous years as I wasn't here, but it's pretty typical to have some verbiage and some narrative in any budget book so as to give context as to where we've arrived at these, at these dollar amounts.
So is that, does that mean if you'd been here in '24 or '23 or '22 that there probably been accomplishments in there?
I'm used to writing them for legislative purposes and in the Indiana General Assembly, it was required to have a comprehensive budget submittal letter that outlined all of that. So that's pretty typical for us to have as well.
Does it have anything to do with the election?
I wouldn't know. No, not in my mind.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Nancy?
Our next speaker is Darrell O'Hare.
Here in council, I'm here tonight because I won't be here next week when you're doing your, so please bear with me if, I hope what I'm bringing up will actually apply to the point. Yep, does that better?
Yes, ma'am. Perfect.
Okay. I have to admit, the budget's quite long, so going through it, I don't have the ability to parse out all the wonderful details. But something came to my mind. I've brought it up several times during, you know, public comment about how can we really utilize our historic museums and properties, as I call them, not historic assets. There's a long explanation for why I don't call them that. But I know that we have the goal for tourism and development and historic activation. And we're doing that with various projects right now. And I would like to see in the budget, the possibility for a history center. And I brought this up actually when I think we were activating the funds for the new complex of building, I mean, well, the existing complex of buildings and properties, but also that we wanted to, I was saying, why can't we build instead of just an event facility, why don't we get a history center? We are sitting in the middle of a very unique opportunity, especially in the South, where we have buildings, properties and nature that really speak to the life of the land from as early as the Native Americans that were here and, and moving all the way through pre-Civil War and post-Civil War. And we have communities that really have voices that I think we're trying to elevate by creating an events facility without necessarily tying into what that history is. And so I think it's possible that we can put in a feasibility study for a history center. Because if you want people to come here to really look at our history, I think we should welcome them and also have a space that really brings in a variety of groups who are discovering all kinds of amazing things. I do a lot of research myself and some of you are aware of it. But, you know, this is a huge industry and it's also a huge, an important task that a city that is, has the amount of history that we have, that we can articulate that in a way, that we should put our money there to, and also, you know, hire people who are involved with historic preservation or involved with, you know, unearthing and giving voice to our, our history, bringing in communities so that it's, I don't know, it's just an amazing opportunity. I'm sitting on it half the time and I know I send you emails about, you know, is the name set in stone and I haven't heard back and I don't know. And, you know, I just think that we need a family, not family, sorry, a history center. I don't know, I keep saying family history. A history center. And one that is not necessarily part of one of the buildings, but close by, or it could be housed in our parks. But I hope that we will consider at least giving some money towards that feasibility as that is a question. Don't want to activate an event space, especially what happened with the trees and all those kinds of things. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. And I'm not trying to say slow down necessarily, but I'm trying to say, let's be really intentional with the way in which we're going to use our historic properties and museums, because they really are museums and the land itself has a story to tell. So I don't know if that's appropriate for this meeting, but it's about the budget and I'm asking you to spend money without changing the overall or adding in, but finding a place. The only other place that I saw in the budget where there might have been money for that is it looked like there's possible outsourcing of custodial work or something on the facilities. So I don't know if that's, those seem to increase, you know, by 61,000 or something like that from one year to another. So I thought maybe those funds could be used, but I don't know how that's being used. So there you go. Thank you very much and I won't see you next week.
Thank you, Darrell. Thank you for the thoughts and the comments. I'll let some of my colleagues address the history center. I'm sure some of the council would like to address that. Councilmember Hall?
So I love that idea. And we do have the Atlanta Historical Society. And I've often had conversations with them. They have a home in the Cultural Arts Center right now. And per conversations, I thought at some future date, when funding allows, it would be great if they were closer to where our historic homes are and maybe as part of an outbuilding or had a location there that was a destination location similar to what you're talking about, maybe expand on what they have. I mean, they have a tremendous archive and historians, they do a fabulous job. They're just tucked away up there. I'm not sure what their traffic count is, but I love that idea. And hopefully one day we can fund it.
Sarah?
I completely appreciate the feedback. We do have Roswell Historical Society, which the city did provide funding for ongoing for quite a while. That said, I am really excited in this budget that we do have a line item for DOCS, to bring DOCS back online. Some feedback that I had gotten from some residents was that there are some gaps in the way that we as a city present history, especially as it relates to Black history. The way that the resident provided their feedback was you have Black Roswellians perceived within the context of enslavement, but missing the entire context of the Civil Rights era, Jim Crow, and really how we still have a fairly decent and solid Black community here in Roswell that just lacks that amount of representation. So I really do hope that we're able to use something like DOCS Cafe, understanding it is, it is little. It is a small building. Not to say that that's to minimize Black history here in Roswell, but I personally hope to be able to showcase some Civil Rights era history from Roswell within the, when we bring it back online, DOCS Cafe.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you, Christine. Alan?
Darrell, as a, as a history buff and the husband of a social studies teacher who brings kids to the historic assets, I think that's a great idea. I'm, I'm trying to figure out what a feasibility study would look like, what that would mean, but absolutely, you know, it's so important to pass along history. It's, quite frankly, our education system does an abysmal job. It's, everything was, you know, in the now and nothing in the past. And there's so much to learn from, from the things that are here that I would love to see really highlighted. So I'm absolutely all in. I just, I can't imagine what the budget would be for a feasibility study, but it seems like that should be an approachable amount. Thanks, thanks for bringing that up.
I'll just, just add to that. Counsel, any other thoughts? Will, yes, sir. Will, sorry.
One of the other reasons that the history center is located in its current place, as it stands right now, is it is climate controlled and the elements are heavily protected for the archives. And if we were to move it to a different location, then there's, there's quite a lift to make sure that the archives and the historical artifacts are going to be protected the way that they should. Now, totally, totally hear what you're saying about the feasibility study, all good there. And to Councilmember Beeson's point with DOCS Cafe coming back into play, that's going to be something that's going to be very exciting. And for Pastor Strickland that is here, we've been working for several years in a row to get the Pleasant Hill Cemetery as part of the city cutting cycle, and I'm excited to see that coming forward. So we're, we're getting there. We're making good strides.
Yeah, that's a part of the budget too, Will. You might have mentioned that, the Pleasant Hill Cemetery.
The Pleasant Hill Cemetery is going to be part of the next year's budget, this budget that we're discussing right now. So the city will be taking that on. We've got a couple of, a couple of things to work through with paperwork, but the money is there.
David? Lee? I'll just, Lee, you got, yes, ma'am. Lee, go ahead.
Just to address, and I, correct me, gurus on the budget if I've got this wrong, but the $61,000 of custodial care, we've added facilities to our property. So I believe that's to cover additional grounds and buildings, just kind of off of what you were talking about, but I wanted to say that.
I'll just say this. Thank you, Darrell, for the thought on the history center. Thank you for the idea on the feasibility study. History matters deeply and richly, I think, to us as a collective body and to us as a people in the city of Roswell. There's a great living history. One of the things, one of the projects we've been, begun to really work on and talk about is I really want to get the history that's not recorded down with some of the folks that are still here. For example, Dr. Strickland has some very rich history that he can pass on from, from a couple of generations. Calvin Asbury has some very rich history that he can pass on from a couple of generations. That history's not recorded. And Jimmy Vaughn has some very rich history that's not recorded. There's a lot of history of people that are still living that I want to get into the historical narrative of Roswell, because I think it's so rich, it's dynamic. And the whole piece about, and whether it's historic assets or historic properties. What was paramount for us from a strategic perspective was there was a very small part of the population that cared about the properties, because most people just honestly didn't know about them. And the city of Roswell had invested a lot of money into them and was investing, and you can see it in the budgets, about a million dollars a year currently on the OpEx and the ongoing expenses just to maintain them. And it was our perspective as the elected leadership of the city that if we didn't step in to do something, is that the historic properties or historic assets, that the vast majority of them would become irrelevant and ultimately an elected body in the future would see those properties and say, why do we have these assets, is what they would call them, ultimately, five, 10, 15 years down the road, why are we paying a million, two, a million, three to operate them and we have nobody visiting them? And so what I think the wisdom of this collective body, the senior elected leadership, the council and the senior management team came to said, how do we save them? And that was to come up with a plan to say, look, these have got to start creating ways to get people to come see them, and that means creating income streams so they become self-sustaining, so that they're here 20 years from now, 40 years from now, 100 years from now. And the same is true with DOCS Cafe. And DOCS Cafe is just one of many pieces. I will tell you, and Dr. Strickland knows a little bit of this, the incredible rich history. We have two of the oldest Black churches in the entire state of Georgia, right here in Roswell, Pleasant Hill and Mount Zion. That's part of race history. It's part of the history needs to be told. So there are more pieces that need to be complete and compiled. I like the history center. I will tell you, history centers, I think doing a feasibility study is a fine ideal. I think you have to tie it into the activation of being able to pay for it long going, long term, and making it relevant. And that's why, to me, getting more history out that we haven't told is so important today to get that done. It's one of the things we've been talking about is to say, look, there's a lot of history we haven't told. There's a lot of history that needs to be told. Roswell's history is much more interesting and dynamic than even a lot of people think they know about Roswell history. It is really a fascinating city of the 171 years, and she's changed many times. And she's not a simple cookie cutter story. There's a lot to Roswell. And it's a story worth knowing and a story worth repeating. But you got to have the means that people will go pay attention to it. And very often, when you create, you could create a, what do you call it, a vault tomb? You can accidentally create a tomb that ultimately fails because people, that's a great thing when you create it, but if you don't have a way for people to keep seeing it, making it relevant, ultimately people forget about it. But I love the idea. Would you guys address the question on the outsourcing of custodial work, specifically on the $61,000 increase from FY '25 to FY '26?
Yes, sir. The custodial work is both a increase in the amount of facilities that we do have, that we would have custodial work, and the activation and rentals that we, and we had also kind of reviewed what we could do at all of our locations. So it's a combination. It's not just one particular building.
Thank you, Lyd. Any other thoughts, comments or questions from council? Yes, ma'am. Sarah?
I've got questions. Several. I'll try to do this as quickly as possible. I'm going in chronological order.
Are you going into the, like, the overall budget?
Yes.
Can I, can I close down the?
Oh, you, you go for it. No.
Yes, ma'am. Bear with me.
Don't want to steal your thunder.
You got your budget presentation questions, right?
Yes.
Okay, don't let me screw that up.
Look at Adam looking at me like he's already nervous. It's like, what is she asking? Yes, I will defer to you, Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Roman, and thank you, Darrell. Nancy, do we have any other Roswell residents who'd like to speak on the budget?
There are no other speakers.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you all. All right. Counsel, the floor is yours. And Sarah, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're right.
So please.
Jumping ahead here. I have very small, short questions. They're just based off of individual line items as I went through the budget binder. For context for the public, we as council received this budget, the binder as we refer it, but it's the same thing as roswellgov.com/budget. If you go to the proposed FY '26 budget, it's exactly what you will see online, is exactly what is sitting in front of me on the dais. This is what we received at initiation last week. We did not see it before then. We had a budget workshop, so conceptually we had an idea of what was going to be goals that were based off of policy goals. These are the individual ones. So with that, these are probably directed mostly towards Adam. I will start on page six of 118, looking at current year revenues by account. Looking through business taxes as well as licenses and permits on the following page, I do not see any specific line item where short-term rental fees would be coming into play. Since we did pass that policy in June of this year, it's going to be implemented January 1, with the understanding that there is a grace period through March 31st. Which line item would we recognize those revenues in? I'm looking for short-term rental licenses. Since we passed the ordinance in June of this year, that will be implemented in '26. I don't see a significant change in hotel motel or business and occupation tax. I don't see a significant change in hotel motel or business and occupation tax. Or, for example, if you look under licenses and permits, you have massage parlor fees, so that's a separate line item. I don't see anywhere that would be indicative of where we'd be recognizing revenues for short-term rentals.
If I may, 31404 and 31405 and 31406, I'm sorry, 05 and 06, those do have an increase.
It's, we do, but it's so small. Just based off the number of short-term rentals we have, I would have expected a higher on the line item. It's almost a negligible amount.
That's a fair question, and thank you for finding income and revenue that's not on there.
Some of these I might not get an answer right at this very second, so I understand. These are questions.
Sarah, keep asking these kind of questions, please.
Okay, here we go. Let's, let's see if it's under the couch cushions, shall we? Um, okay.
Sarah, can Alan ask you a question? On the short-term rental thing?
Yes.
I've spent a little bit of time on this, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but one, we haven't been very successful previous, in previous years of even having those businesses register. So this is a new initiative that we are, it's sort of a seek and destroy mission, as it were, is, we've got to find them, and that's, that's not been easy. So we're, we're trying to find them. Two is, we expect that the number will go down. It's Schrödinger's cat, right? We're going to open the door and the cat's going to be dead, so.
Schrödinger's Airbnb.
Exactly, exactly. So there will be fewer of them. I mean, this has been a real challenge for a lot of neighborhoods, and so part of this initiative is not so much a revenue initiative as it is a, a code and quality of life issue. So I wasn't expecting, even though I'm certainly, you know, all for the initiative itself, I don't think it's, it's necessarily focused on revenue as much as it is on quality of life issues.
It's a, Alan, it's a great, Sarah, great question. Alan, great point. Without even getting into the numbers, and I don't remember looking at it, so I apologize on this one myself. I remember when we did it. I don't remember putting any income into the, into the equation. So if it's there, you can put, blame me, because I don't remember actually throwing any dollars at this. Because I think to Alan's point, it's more, it's more a policy, and this is your program, this is your baby.
It's, it's a quality of life, and it's for enforcement, I understand. I just want to make sure that we're recognizing it within the revenue since it is a new revenue source.
We will joyously recognize it.
My fault, my fault. There should be a line item, and to your point, probably a little hesitant on adding new line items after we added one last year that kind of, you know, we had to, we understood how to pay for it, but it did get, it has been ballyhooed about. And that's my bad, so that line item should be on there as part of, because I know, you've got a code for it, I'm sure, can create a code for it. Let's separate it if we can, if that's, if that makes sense to you from an accounting perspective.
Yeah, we'll go back and look. So, again, I can't speak to my, anytime before my arrival here, but when you adopt a chart of accounts, sometimes you have to shoehorn in.
Yes.
Into what that object level is, but we'll go ahead and.
Particularly, do you think it's worth $3,000 a year? Or $7,000 a year?
Yeah, I mean, if it's recognized in business and occupation tax, I understand, but in this case, business and occupation tax is actually projected to be lower compared to FY '25. So just wanting to make sure that we're accounting for it somewhere.
And just having clarity where that is. I think it's a very clear point. So, okay, great point.
Will do.
I will hit it and quit it. Some more questions for you. I do appreciate there was another line item that was added that was new on page 22 of 118 for apartment livability inspections. This also goes towards quality of life. That said, three line items below it, 321110, alcohol, beer, and wine license. I was just curious as to how we're going up from 580 in FY '25 to 747. Are we going to be increasing the license fees, or do we just have projected more businesses boozing it up?
So it's made up in volume.
Alcohol by volume?
No, in, in terms, the rate is not changing, it's the volume of, of the, the, the fee itself.
Wonderful. So the fees themselves are not increasing? That was a question that I'd received from a business operator who was asking if they were projected to have fee increases on the alcohol licenses. Not an increase in the.
Not in fees, it's made up in volume.
Yeah, I'm not aware. Yeah, explain that a little bit so everybody understands what you mean, Adam.
So in, instead of the, the dollar increase being based upon an increase in the fee on a variable increase, it's actually made up in the volume of, instead of the, the base fee. So there's more, but not more fee. I don't know if that's as clear as mud.
I'm afraid this one in particular is the fiscal year change, the 12 months.
Okay.
So when we talk about volume versus change in fee, this is the rate versus volume discussion that we had previously on another matter. We're just.
It's not the volume.
Right. So, the licenses are renewing at a higher rate than previous years, but the license itself is still going to be priced the same way as they've been priced in the past. So we're not changing the pricing on the license, we're just renewing more licenses.
That's, to your point. So, just to be very specific, so to answer Sarah's question, if I'm a, if I'm an operator, am I paying more in '26? And that, what I am paying more for is, you're just, you're getting more licenses, you're ca, you're, right? You're capturing more licenses, is that correct?
Yeah, there's, there's also some more renewals taking place because of the change of fiscal. There's still a little bit of the bleed out of the change of fiscal year.
To carry over the fiscal, fiscal year from the.
Which will hopefully be done by 2026 and everything will be comparable year over year.
Confident that'll happen.
Was that now?
I'm confident on that.
I am too.
Appreciate it. I also noticed throughout several departments, there is a significant investment in education and training light items, which I do appreciate, being able to invest in staff. Not, yes, sir.
Where are you?
I'm, I'm, I'm everywhere.
Oh, okay.
I'm not only present.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, so in several of the departments, there was an increase in training, which I do appreciate. I also noticed a slight increase in salaries and benefits as well, which I, I do hope means, and you can clarify this for me, do you, will that mean that there will be any kind of pay increases for employees this year, or is that like a cola? How are we interpreting that?
That's a policy question that, that ultimately, you, you decide.
Man, I'm great at policy, so I'm just saying.
Ultimately, I mean, you know my perspective on it. Like, I'm trying to get more money every year into the pay system, and I'm trying to create it more based upon performance, right? Rather than just flat across the boards, 2% raises. I'm trying to make sure, hey.
It's merit-based.
That's right.
Well, I say this as somebody who, I mean, I oversee operations for a company. We're a firm believer internally that if, year to year, I, I love a cola, not just Coke. When you're looking at your pay stub, if your cost of living is not adjusted year to year, you are getting a pay cut. And so if you're not matching inflation and you're not matching the cost of living, I want to make sure that that's something we're accounting for.
Organizational, you have responsibility to keep people happy, right? Through your, through their pay.
I want them to be able to pay their bills. Happiness is one thing, but yeah.
Well, that's a whole different question, right? I mean, you don't do, you don't do that through colas, right? When somebody takes a pay, they spend their rate. There's, there's a lot of pieces in that equation. The question is, is though, from an organizational perspective, how do you pay people? And how do you reward people? And how do you incentivize people? And how do you want people to feel great about what they're doing? I think that's a fair question. So you've seen my, I'm going to use me for a second. My commitment, if you look at this from a budgetary perspective, is to continue to take tax dollars that the residents and the business of Roswell put into our collective hands to spend. I've been very committed to continue to put more dollars. If you look historically, that's not the case, and then occasionally, there's a little knee-jerk reaction and it's a 2% or 3% raise. Part of the, part of this is making it a top place to work is, part, one of those pieces is pay, right? There's no question about that. So you're not wrong, don't disagree. I'm just saying, like you said, like the way you treat your business, you have merit-based pay, right? You're trying to, you're trying to reward people who, the people who do exceptional jobs, you don't want them just to end up with a cola, right? And I think that's, that's part of what we're, so I don't think we're saying different things. I just, I think, I want, I want people to know from a policy perspective, it's my perspective, is to continue, because I've heard people say, look, hey, you know, people sometimes respond very adversely to raising pay for government employees. I have a much different position on that. I'm very aggressive about wanting to increase pay for government employees because the government employees, the, the staff of the city of Roswell are, at the end of the day, the ones who execute either fantastically, okay, or not so well. And I think we've continued to see a, a team that has continued to respond in much very, very powerful ways, and that's why we said, part of this destination is to make Roswell a top place, top tier place to work. Pay is one of those equations, so you can't be static on pay. So from a policy perspective, I'm very aggressive, and you see it in the budget every year. I keep throwing dollars at it in the budget because I'm a big believer, you have to start there. The policy question ultimately is going to land with you and your colleagues about that, right? But I don't think there's any disagreement about, yet, if you have somebody employed that you, you know, they're not flat, they're not flatlined.
Right.
It is worth noting that for years and years and years in this city, employees were flatlined, regardless of their performance. And it's worth noting, and you can see right here, is there's a proposal. This is not for fire and police. Well, yeah, it is. I'm sorrying that wrong. You've got an increase of four and a half million dollars.
Yes.
And, and I will tell you, and by the way, those of you who know this, who do with budgets, budgets are not static instruments. Kind of like, you put things together, and as you go through the year, you find things both adversely and positively that change the numbers. And we always, you know, that's always a part of the budget equation, and we're always doing that, thinking about, hey, how do we continue to add dollars to the compensation package? Because we think that is one of the most important ingredients of our success. And we probably don't say that enough. And the other one is, you can thank Mr. Knighton, Sarah, and, thank Mr. Knighton and Mr. Stevens and their team. Mr. Knighton especially, on this, the increase on the, the first item you brought up, the education and training.
Yes. No, I appreciate that, and I also want to note too, for the viewing audience, I know that it was reiterated in the budget presentation, not only during initiation, but was reiterated tonight as well, that there's no personnel cuts within this budget, which I'm a very big fan of, and I appreciate that, being a priority for not only the mayor's budget, but on behalf of senior leadership as well.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we, do we answer your question?
You did. I appreciate it. Thank you. Let's keep going, Charlie.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking at still page 26 of 118, mayor's expenses, I just want to clarify, I know last year we budgeted 7,000. We're looking at 77. That's because that includes the retreat, correct?
Are you in page, where are you, Sarah?
Page 26 of 118, general fund expenditures by account, line item, it's like fourth from the bottom.
Are you looking at the mayor?
Yeah. I'm looking at you.
That guy gets cut every year.
Well, I just want to make sure, because the difference, the differential between this year and last year, it's to account for the retreat, correct? Or is there some other line item that's built into that?
Honestly, I, that's one item I don't pay any attention to when we're doing the budget. I never pay any attention to my money. I don't know.
Okay. I will, I will get an answer. No worries. We've got a whole nother week.
We can get you an answer.
Looking at the next page, 27 of 118, under operating total, about, one, two, three, about six from the bottom, contingency operating, we budgeted 744 last year. We came out at 1.6 million. I was just curious as to how that came out to more than double what we budgeted and what that was allocated towards.
Yeah, so in, in addition to the appropriation of the contingency, it's anything carry-forward that wasn't expended. So that's what would drive up that dollar amount.
Got it. So what, what do we carry forward?
Any unspent appropriation.
For the dollar value?
Yeah.
Oh, we can.
Add it to the pile of questions to be answered.
I feel like this is Prime Minister's Questions all of a sudden.
Because we do carry forward the contingency, I want to show it so that we don't accidentally try and count the same money twice.
Got it.
It's showing in the, the spent here, but typically, we move it when we actually spend it in the other group.
That helps. Thank you.
It's a lot like capital in that respect.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. So it's accounting fun.
So did we answer one of the many?
You did.
Okay.
I appreciate it. I am moving, moving, moving along. Page 49 of 118, we've moved into water utility revenues and expenses. We have a line item for other slash miscellaneous fees, and it looks like we got, in terms of charges for services, it was a negative 241, 675. We budgeted zero, we budgeted zero again. What, what, what is that number? Because it's a quarter of a million dollars.
Forty-nine.
Yeah, 49 of 118, subsection water utility revenues, expenses, miscellaneous revenues total.
I'll have to research that one. I believe it has, either has to do with insurance or the.
So would that be a refund?
It is, it is an enterprise fund.
It's an enterprise fund, so that was what I was curious about, because it's recognized under revenues by account.
Sharon might be able to address that, because maybe it has to do with the, actually, no, I was thinking transfer station, but this is water utility.
Yeah, it's water utility.
Yes, sir. Sorry, David?
Could it be, we sold water to Fulton County. Could it be related to that?
Oh.
I don't, there's a specific, there's a couple, there's a couple of questions actually in here, so I think they can all be answered, hopefully.
I believe we are all a little puzzled by that. I'm sure we can provide an answer at the next, we'll, we'll send it out to council and make it available for the next budget.
Appreciate it.
That's a fair, like, it's a fair question. Adam, I'm sure Bill, Adam, both being new to the city of Roswell's finance team, you're both within, you know, a year, so I don't have to tell you guys, sorry, I don't like, nobody likes to see numbers like these, but you don't like to be this far off unless you've got a plausible reason up and down the line, right? Those are pretty, like, to my, just looking at this, yeah. We're a little bit off on our numbers in terms of projections of what came in. We probably ought to be a little tighter than that. Guys disagree with that?
Well, it, yeah, we'll have to do some research as to what that is. So in the, in the projections, those are derived out of forecasting models, and something could have slipped through in terms of what we anticipate at year-end as a corrective entry?
Yep.
Or it could have been a variety of different things that we'll just have to look into.
Yeah, the one that strikes me the most is capacity fees, right? I'm looking at capacity fees.
344218.
344218. 344218.
Yeah.
That is one time, depending on when the construction happens. So depending on when something goes in, we would charge them for the extra capacity they have added to our system.
Yep.
And so the timing of those is very hard to do because it depends on when the construction happens. The same thing for some meter fees as well.
The utility bill late charges, that's a significant difference for 124,000, obviously revenue collected, but we're not in the game, obviously, you know, we're in the, we're in the projection game of being fairly accurate. That's a significant difference that we collected in additional 124,000, 120, $19,000 in that particular fund. Same with the water stop service fees. We're off to, these numbers are too, we're just, even though we're collecting more money, we should have a good understanding of why we are collecting that much more money because we're not in, particularly on the fees and on late charges, because obviously we, we don't want people to have late charges. So we want to find a way to help negate that, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Coming kind of out of order on that, just because you brought up the fees and charges, I'm going to come slightly out of the way that I'm going in the binder. On page 85 of 118, there's a Recreation Participation Fund. Speaking of fees, in FY25, first line item top of the page, we had approved in the budget about a million dollars of recreation admin fees. We only collected about 405 as of September. I'm sure there will be a little bit more.
Sarah, slow down for me. Tell me, I'm just getting...
I'm sorry. Page 85?
Okay.
Top line, recreation admin fee. So are we waiving admin fees on that? Because it's showing zero.
That was a change in how we are doing business and going forward, we will not charge it as an admin fee. It'll be included in the...
Built-in cost. Okay. So not a separate line item fee, it's a built-in cost.
Going forward.
Okay. Understood. That is helpful. Going back again.
Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
How do you show the subsidy on that if you're changing that?
How do you recognize the built-in fees?
Because you're subsidizing, I think, a significant amount of money into Parks and Rec out of the general fund, I think about $683,000 if I remember correctly.
It's just operating transfers in line. How do we charge, how do we show it against each group?
Yeah. So how do we have clarity about the subsidy? Like, of course, I've heard people say, hey, fees have gone up, but we're, the general fund is still subsidizing, tax, taxpayers are still subsidizing parking rec programs.
And I believe it is specifically three different groups, and I have to admit, I don't have that one off the top of my head. But I know Aquatics is one of those, and I think that I, I would have to look to see what the other two areas are, but we have specifically identified which three groups.
This, Lynn, would you do that for me so I can, so I can share that with our fellow electeds and they've got clarity on that? That'd be helpful. Thank you so much.
We good? I'm going to keep going. Okay. Page 71 of 118, Parking Services, General Fund Revenues by Account. First, I would like to applaud the team for putting a more reasonable number by my terms, 422 projected this year versus the 2.2 last year. I know a lot of that was guided by policy, but I wanted to know, does the FY26 proposed budget include the parking deck coming online for about six months?
Yeah.
Yes.
It does.
Okay. So with the assumption that the parking deck will be open by end year, this will assume those revenues.
Yeah. So if you actually look in the section immediately under that, it has the revenue assumptions for the FY2026 revenue notes. So that has occupancy rate and ratio of non-resident to resident and then how we've arrived at that number.
Got it. So this still assumes free parking for residents, which was a policy decision that was set earlier this year, but it assumes that there's...
It does even more. It makes an assumption that the free parking is going to change the, the demand ratios. So it's saying like, hey, right now theoretically, we think 65% of the parking will be for non-residents, and we think by going to free parking, that it's going to change the demand model to 50%.
Okay.
Right? So we actually kind of, we're negating, we're hurting our revenue stream.
You're inducing demand.
Exactly.
Okay. Understood.
The other assumption that's baked in, Mr. Mayor, is that the parking deck is only assumed to be utilized for about 10 hours a day as opposed to a 24-hour pricing model.
Very conservative.
It's a dynamic pricing model for non-residents, but nonetheless, that dampens the expected amount that we would collect for parking revenue.
It's a pretty conservative model.
We believe it is, yes.
Yeah.
All righty, I'm going to keep going. Sorry, I realize that I didn't go as far back as I meant to. Page 62 of 118, this is getting confusing on my end. I apologize.
It's confusing on my end. What did you do? This is like, you're brutal.
Well, I skipped ahead originally because you talked about fees, and I was like, oh, that makes sense.
27, 32, 46, alert.
Yep. I like to keep you on your toes. Keep it spicy. This is about as fun as we get with a budget, guys. Page 62 of 118, Economic Development. Looking at line item number one of operating, professional services, we budgeted 800 last year. We came in at 1.8, and so we're budgeting for 790 this year, which my best assumption is still lower than last year. I appreciate that it's lower than last year because that was something that we had talked about back and forth in last year's budget, but just curious as to how we got from 800 budgeted to 1.8 by Q3 of this year, given that that was the budget. Do we have budget amendments that came forward for a million dollars?
Some of this is based on that cash basis. Because we issue a purchase order in a year, doesn't mean that that actually gets spent and out the door in that year, but we have to show it is spent in that year. So the 600 at the bottom, under the table, there is the line that has the contingency. If you remember at the end of '25 approved budget, we did put a contingency in for economic contingency.
Yes.
And so that did move to this group, and so...
But wasn't the contingency 600,000?
So 600 plus the 800 that it started out, plus any POs or task orders that had been issued prior to January 1st, that will be spent before December 31st.
Okay. So that's why the contingency being 600, on top of the 800 should be 1.4, you're saying that the additional 424 is from past year being recognized in FY25?
Based on when the work was completed and when the invoices were received, yeah.
Okay. Understood. So we didn't necessarily exceed that budget so much as that's just when it's recognized on accounting. And then going back to my very anachronistic way of interpreting this, I have one final question. I'm just making sure I don't miss any of my little notes.
Will the gentle lady yield for a moment?
Of course. It's the first time I've ever been called gentle. Thanks, Alan.
So I, I was just asking David, I, I believe, because he and I had this conversation every, every budget cycle, we go through this conversation about how many, how many deals are we going to do, how many hours are we going to do, how many documents are we going to do. Are the legal fees also part of this as we close for this, or is that all somewhere else?
That would be located on another...
Okay. So, so we're not putting the legal fees, for instance, for the Hill Street Development in the economic development budget, but in some other budget?
In the legal budget.
Okay.
Last and final question, page 105, Finance. Similar to my last question, and if this might be the same exact answer, I just want to make sure for clarity's sake. First line item under operating, 521201 Professional Services, we budgeted 210 for professional services. We came out at, as of Q3, 323, so we're more than 100,000 over budget. Is that because we had a line item from last year that's being recognized this year, or is, did we just blow out that budget?
A lot of that does deal with the audit, and so that professional service was for the 2024 six month, so we would have issued the purchase order prior to the close of year. But a lot of that activity happened in this year, and so a lot of that relates to that.
Got it. So your, your AR and your AP are essentially just balancing this out. Okay. Understood. That wraps up all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Counsel, any other thoughts, comments, or questions?
I have a couple, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. Alan, Councilmember Sells? I, I've asked this a couple of times, and I don't, I, I have an answer. I wonder if y'all do. Do you have the breakdown on the, on the property taxes between residential and commercial? I believe, Bill, you emailed me that.
Yes.
I have it if it would be useful.
Did I not give it back or do you want me to?
No, it's, it's, it's pretty small. It's a text. The answer is that the residential real property tax is 21 million, and I'm not sure which line item this falls in. The commercial is 8.7 million. Do you remember that sound from, right, Bill? Okay. So the moral of the story is, is that two thirds, oh, well, gosh, more than that. Yeah, I guess it's about two thirds or more of the, of the property tax is borne by the residents. And that, to me, is one of the largest budget shortfalls, problems that we are seeking to address through good use of the small 14% of acreage that we have in this city that's eligible for commercial development. So, so as we talk about how we use, let's say, a certain corner or a certain strip of land, if we are ever to see that flip, it's that we should be, be maximizing the revenue on those places where we can maximize revenue. And to me, that's a budget item as well as a philosophy. Thank you. It's an excellent point, Councilmember Sells. Yeah, because I'm a little, maybe we're, maybe we're just not doing politically what we need to do in the budget, but the ED budget needs to be $2 million. I didn't do that. I'm kind of like, oh my gosh, because that investment is what turns that mix around. If you don't invest in your ED side, you are not going to turn that residential mix to commercial mix. If that's that simple. It does not happen by magic. It doesn't happen by good luck. It happens by intentional stratagem and action and the right kind of planning, which is what the path this city's on through the leadership of the senior team, through the leadership of the selected council, and through the leadership of our chief economic architect, Seer. And that's an investment on the city's part to change how revenue comes into the city and to reduce the burden ultimately on the residential property tax owner. Right. Absolutely. So I did, I didn't do the page number thing as I went through and wrote down my questions, so I can't point to the right page, but I'm sure you can answer this. The PFA is the source of, of funds for the roof, which is $7 million. Yes. As well as, just like we did last year for the park that, at Spruill. So... Alan, can you point out why that's so important? Like, why would you spend PFA money? I'm fixing to. Okay. So let's talk about that briefly because that will be a revenue bond, right? Because the PFA is going, is, is going to make the payments on the roof of this building, of the bond for the roof of this building, and the revenue is going to come through an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Public Finance Authority, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So when people talk about, oh, we're using revenue bonds to not take it to the people for, let's say, a $7 million roof, which is, what are we, like, 20 years past the useful life of this roof, if I'm not mistaken, something like that?
Right.
20, what's the number? 20, 20. 20 years past the useful, useful life of this, of this roof. What I want to talk briefly about is instead of, we're using the PFA to raise it, which stands for Public Finance Authority, which is for projects that are specifically for what?
Beneficial to the city, city property owned by city, serve the city.
So it's not economic development. It's not, it's not a way to hide the ball or anything of the sort. People can see the roof anytime they want to drive down. They can look at the roof that's going to be there, the $7 million. So we're using the PFA because that allows us to, to budget for that cost over multiple years and incur it all in the first year. Is that, is that fair?
Yeah. Why, as I would describe, we are using long money for a long asset.
That's, it's great to talk about the money side, and I'm glad you're doing that. I want to ask another question.
Yes, sir.
Along this line, thinking, and Mr. Watson, you could address this, or Mr. Stevens or Mr. Knighton, you could address this. The status of fixing that roof is imminent, or we can do it later? Yeah. Why are we fixing a roof? Why we got, just want to know, why, why we got to fix? If it's been gone for 20 years, why we got to do it now? Why we got to spend $7 million?
There's nothing more than I'd rather spend money on different items than on this roof, but we have constant leaks all around City Hall. And unfortunately, when the roof was installed back in 1990, it was installed incorrectly. And so we are facing the repercussions of it now.
So the roof was installed incorrectly in 1990?
Correct. And the materials on the outside have, are past their useful life, so they need to be...
And it's past its useful life to it. But I'm going to, I want to know, just as a, as a resident, so I'm going to spend $7 million, why can't I go a couple more years?
Except to Mayor and Council, I would not recommend it.
The answer is what you told me is, is imminent.
Yes, sir.
Imminent. You said this is an imminent issue. If you don't deal with this now, the city's going to pay a lot more money than $7 million to solve the problem, including what it's going to do to the people who work inside the building, including the people who come visit the building, including being able to have to shut down the building from time to time. You said this is an imminent pro, I'm putting words in your mouth, so I want you to say it instead of me saying it. You said this is imminent, Kurt.
Yes, sir. It is imminent.
He said, we don't do something about it. So I'm going to go back to the financial question. So do I have time, Mr. CFO, to go out and put this as a public, to put it to the people, right, and say, look, I'm going to put this in the ballot. I found this out in, we just found this out in October. You know when it goes on the ballot? Special election, if you have one, which costs the taxpayers about a half million dollars to do, just in that itself, right? Just that alone. But realistically, would go on the ballot when, November of next year, when the next election comes again. So I'm going to put off an issue that's an imminent issue to the City of Roswell taxpayers and to the City of Roswell itself. It's going to cost more money if I don't spend the money, which means I have to find a source to do that. Thus, Alan, I go to what? A PFA and go to a revenue bond instead of going for a general, right? Exactly. And, you know, the, the city does not have, if, however we spent the money, it would come out of, of the funds that we have, right? So the, well, all we're really doing is using the balance sheet wisely. This is, this, as a businessman, I, this makes all the sense in the world, and I, and we've talked about this before in this room, about the fact that the city missed opportunities to fund these shortfalls and maintenance for years and years when money was really, really cheap. It's becoming cheaper at the moment, but, but this is the opportunity for us to match revenue over time with the expenditure today that's going to benefit us over time. As you say, long money for long projects. That's, that's really what we're talking about. Don't go away, Brian. I got one for you, too.
Oh, I was going to add some, some more context.
Yeah, please do.
To PFA versus GO bonds. They're called revenue bonds, like an economic development bond would be issued by DDA, but that's a legal title. That's not the function or the purpose. As, as one of y'all said, it's not to hide the expenditure. As you know, the PFA agenda and the city IGA with the PFA, part of public meetings, publication, we go through committee council cycle twice, once to authorize the, the RFP process, and then once to actually accept it. And another thing that's really important on the cost of the PFA, and Mr. Mayor, you nailed it, the cost of raising funds under a PFA is lower for lower dollar amounts. So at a $7 million roof, it doesn't make sense to pay $500,000 in fees. We're not going to pay $50,000 to $60,000 in fees through an RFP process for banks who want to bid on our terms, whereas on a GO bond, they're done by large capital institutions, and they typically dictate terms back to us because of the amount of money involved. So all in all, you're matching the weight and size of project to the weight and size of the financing instrument, and the PFA instrument is typically dollar, dollar a cheaper instrument to use and benefits the city taxpayer to get an imminent project done today. Prival process on a PFA, the last one we did for Spruill, was about 80 days from start to finish.
Well, and also, you know, two, two things. You know, you're right. It's a small bond. The tendency, if you're going to do a GO bond, for one thing, the level of planning, we, we know exactly, you probably already have bids, right, Brian, on this roof? Who know, is it at risk? Is, is the contractor at risk, or do we have a contingency in this particular budget?
There is contingency in the budget. We have not finalized anything with a, any contractor.
But, but we know, we've gotten the bids back and all of that, right? We're...
We have a couple of bids back. We would still need to negotiate depending on outcome of this.
Okay. So if we were doing something, 10 things, then we would have less precision with the level at which we're thinking about it. So we're matching the money specifically, and you feel that this $7 million is sufficient for this project because you've already asked the market what it takes. Is that correct?
Okay. That's correct.
Yeah. And the last thing I'd say, Mayor, is that, you know, I cannot imagine as a citizen, an elected body, coming and asking me if, if I approve of replacing the roof. I just, I can't imagine what that would look like. You know, we're, we're going to do a, we're going to do a public referendum on whether or not we should replace the roof. That just makes sense. Alan, is that kind of like the question is, should we raise the pay of the police? Right. Exactly. Should we take that question to the people? I think the people, we know what the people think. So I just wanted to point that out. If I could turn, turn the corner, unless there's any other comments you guys want to make about the, this particular issue?
Hey, I'm cutting off one.
Yes, Councilmember Johnson. Oh, you got to go. See you. Yes, sir. Have a good night at work. We miss you already.
That's a lie.
You've been putting people to sleep here, too, so.
I've spoken. You're the one putting them asleep.
Let's talk stormwater, which is our favorite topic. I want to talk about that just briefly. We talked about it on the budget, on the day, on the budget day. Let's revisit that just a little bit and how it's, we are building more capacity than is required, so it's, and it's reflected in the budget. It's a surplus in the budget this year, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. And that's because we are building extra surplus and we are building some more, so there's going to be excess capacity even beyond this. Or, or are you expecting all of this to come online for like, for mimosa? Are there other places that are coming online this year or into the 27 that you can talk about?
So you're talking about the regional detention facilities?
Yeah, exactly.
So that will not encompass the entire city. It will be for the drainage areas that are coming into those, those facilities.
Correct.
They will be online in '26.
Both of them? The pond? Okay, okay. And so, and that's also, so that's a source of revenue that we're using our capacity for, but also it's a gate to development. Let's talk about that just briefly, and you and I have talked about that before. So if a developer wants to develop close by these, in these, as we call them regions, these areas where there's a drain, a drainage basin that collects in one place, they can do that because we have excess capacity to sell them as opposed to having to build their own and sink their own. They can pay us to do so. That's what that's about.
That's correct. They could either do it on their own, or it'd be a lot cheaper to buy into the, we'll call them credits, stormwater credits.
And it speeds the development as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Brian. Surprised visitor. We're glad you came up here to join us. Don't go far. We always like to hear more from you, particularly when we talk about stormwater because that is something you guys are in the forefront of and way ahead of most cities. Other thoughts and comments from council? Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Alan. David, that was outstanding. Will, Christine, first reading? First reading, comments? Mayor Pro Tim Hills? Okay. Well, let me see. That was outstanding, thank you very much. Thank you, uh, Bill, Adam, Lynn, team, very much. Um, at this time, I think we've got our comments done. I'm going to ask for a motion on the, um, approval of the first reading of the budget. Do I have a motion? Christine Hall, would you read that for me, please, ma'am?[1717.66]